This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening. Tonight, I am calling this Eau Claire School Board meeting, regular meeting, to order in honor of Supervisor Harvey Milk. Next week marks the fortieth anniversary of Supervisor Milk’s assassination. And allowing that milestone to go on, to go by without recognition was simply something I could not do. Harvey Milk was the first openly gay man elected to major public office in the United States, and he once said that his being elected was a green light to move forward. Harvey Milk’s life is of great importance to me personally and for so many other LGBTQ elected officials across this country who got that green light and are able to live and serve in office as our authentic selves in part because of the sacrifices and groundwork from amazing trailblazers like him. So in closing, I would like to read a quote from Harvey Milk. “Rights are won only by those who make their voices heard. All men are created equal, and no matter how hard some people may try, they can never erase those words. That is what America is about.” So with those timeless words in mind that are still so relevant to our work today, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
We have everyone here today, so we can really get the party started. So that brings us now to our public forum. Everyone who signed up will have up to four minutes to speak. The school board will hear anything you have to speak about with the exception of personal complaints of individuals related to the school district or school personnel or any person connected with ECASD. And when you come up, just make sure that that microphone has a red on light and state your name and address for the record. So first up is Laura Hurd.
My name is Laura Hurd and I live at 3204 Glenhaven Place. Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I come to you as a proud Roosevelt mom, active community member, and advocate for Roosevelt Tigers. As you move forward tonight with a vote about the listening sessions regarding Roosevelt and other elementary schools, I urge you to pause before making a vote. Demographics and Trends has two extreme options regarding Roosevelt. One is to repurpose Roosevelt into a 4K building, and the other is to build a new Roosevelt. We have yet to see an option that keeps Roosevelt as a two-section school with the deferred maintenance and secure entrance completed. This would likely result in some boundary shifts, but will leave a current successful and amazing northwest side school open and available. This should be a strong recommendation that is explored and evaluated before having listening sessions. Also, please remember, just a few years ago, the district was willing to and voted on putting money into Roosevelt when the debt dipped. On November 5th, Demographics and Trends shared some schools that are currently running at 65% capacity while others are nearing 100% capacity. When considering long-term planning, we need to take into consideration these capacity concerns and look at overall enrollment for our district. That makes sense. At the same meeting, it was also shared that the Demographics and Trends Committee had contacted 17 clerks but was waiting to hear back from a few. What doesn’t make sense is to redraw boundary maps without this critical information, especially since less than half of the clerks had responded at the time the committee presented to the board two weeks ago. Information was shared to you about multiple homes being built in Pleasant Valley, the town of Brunswick, and some slow-moving lots in the village of Lake Hallie. Last week, a Roosevelt PTA subcommittee member met with the City of Eau Claire planner. It’s important that you also hear about the growth taking place within the current Roosevelt boundaries. We were told that 2018 has had more development than previous years, and more is anticipated in 2019 and 2020. In 2018 alone, there have been 10 building permits for single-family homes, 21 for twin homes, and 30 for multifamily homes. A large development that has been approved within the boundaries of Camden Place, which has 67 lots, 37 of those are twin homes. There is an additional 20 acres south of Camden Place that has been purchased by a developer. Further, CNM purchased the next phase of Aspen Meadows and planned to start selling lots in 2019. Highview Estates still has some open lots, and there is also open land west of Jeffers Ballpark that could turn into residential neighborhoods. As you can tell, the compelling argument for southside growth is being equally matched on the northwest side of Eau Claire. Closing a school has long-lasting effects and oftentimes cannot be reversed. Even if the proposal went through to close Roosevelt and reshift all boundaries, is the district sure that the school’s absorbing students can also take on all of this expansion? The school’s absorbing Roosevelt would sit in the low-to-mid 80% range for capacity. At our last board meeting, some of you expressed your desire to make the listening sessions useful and meaningful. From our perspective, this is a plan that has not been fully fleshed out. The original recommendation to rescind Roosevelt came about six months ago. A decision like this deserves a lot of analysis, particularly with respect to development across the city. I urge you all to think creatively. I recommend that you ask questions. I ask you to think about the district as a whole, but please take into account the devastating impact that these proposals have on many students in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That takes us now to Kristin Kirsten. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Kirsten and I live at 2519 Crestwood Road. I’ve had a Tiger at Roosevelt since the 2013-2014 school year, and we have another two children yet who are yet to go to school. We recently purchased a home on the northwest side in the Roosevelt District with the intention of our younger two going to Roosevelt. We’re deeply saddened by this potential closing of Roosevelt as a 5K or K5 school. If Roosevelt is not going to be rebuilt as a three-section school, I urge the board to consider leaving Roosevelt as-is and making the essential updates to make it safe for our students. Perhaps boundary changes need to be made to accommodate this, but updating Roosevelt for the estimated $1.5 to $3 million should be a strong option on the table that we haven’t seen yet. It seems as though the only two options right now are either repurposing Roosevelt as a 4K or completely shutting it down, or, I’m sorry, or building a new one. Excluding this third option makes the financial difference between those two recommendations pretty large. Roosevelt serves as a strong point of pride in the community, as we can see, and on the northwest side of Eau Claire, and it’s worth keeping open. According to Board Minutes from August of 2016, and I’m going to quote here, “The district’s debt will drop in 2021, and the rest of the debt will be paid off in 2031. This could serve the district well in planning for major capital projects.” Should the board decide to delay the options or the projects for South and Roosevelt, the community should know that the board plans to move forward with those projects at the time when the debt drops. At that time, Roosevelt was removed from the referendum, and our community was under the impression that Roosevelt would be addressed when the debt did drop. Perhaps we would not have had the community’s support if they knew Roosevelt would be left off the referendum and then later dispersed. Now, we’re looking at dispersing 300 students into open seats and putting money into southside schools. If the district is struggling financially and trying to fill open seats and maximize capacity, then district-wide boundaries should be looked at. Instead, we have a proposal on the table to close a northside school to fill seats with a plan to add-on to southside schools. Taxpayers and community members trust that board members will do what is best for the whole district. Unfortunately, the outcomes and perceptions of closing a northside school and channeling money to the southside schools, it does very little for the public’s view on the disparity between the north and southside schools. The decisions you have ahead of you are not easy, but please be sure to have all of the information necessary in making any final decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Next up, we have two members of the same household, so I’ll invite you, if you’d like to come up together, you certainly can and stand with each other. So that’s Pa and Chakong Tao.
Hello. My name is Pa Tao and I’m at 3203 Oakland Street. So I’m a parent, an activist, and community organizer. I’m also part of the Wisconsin Women’s Children Institute, which is part of the Freedom Ain’t Community Power Building Coalition, and that is the first and only funded civic engagement network in the state of Wisconsin. So I’m here today and I’m excited to seek your support to pass the resolution to support the Assembly Bill 34. Assembly Bill 34 will encourage the Monge history, culture, and worldview we taught throughout the state of Wisconsin. Wisconsin has the largest Monge population in the United States, with Eau Claire County having the fourth-largest concentration among Wisconsin. Monge-like other Southeast Asian Americans also have the lowest educational attainment rate in the country. According to our Southeast Asian Research Action Center 2011 report, 39.6% of Monge students of Monge people over the age of 25 do not have a high school diploma. Our school district is working hard to change this outcome to make sure all students are ready for post-secondary education. Our school district is already paving ways for Monge students if you’re included with the recent addition of the Monge history and culture class at North High School level. Educational research and ethnic studies argue that curricula that include history and culture of minority students’ heritage and ethnic backgrounds increases test scores and critical thinking skills. The inclusion of ethnic studies and US history courses also aid students to participate in this democratic nation and in the global world as effective and thoughtful citizens. Given these positive inputs of ethnic studies, the addition of Monge history, culture, worldview classes in Wisconsin schools can provide inclusive and positive learning outcomes that reflects our diverse populations. Students with multiple identities often struggle to fit in with their peers. Peers who don’t understand other students’ history and culture can become bullies. I believe that education and exposure to different cultures can teach our young people to be inclusive and accepting of others. Difference is what makes our life beautiful. Our cultures and our traditions bound us to each other and to the community around us. If you want to have healthy, kind, small adults who care and value our differences, then we need to change the narratives of how we are teaching them about people whose background are different than theirs. As a parent, I am excited for Monge history, culture, and worldview to be a part of my children’s education. I can only imagine the positive outcomes that this will have as they grow and build identities of their own. Thank you for your time today and for allowing me the opportunity to advocate for your support in the passing of this resolution.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chakong Tao Degro. I’m a seventh grader at North St. Middle School. I’m half-Monge and half-Puerto Rican. I love that my family celebrates everything Monge and American. We just had our Monge New Year where I get to dress up in my Monge clothes and celebrate with my friends and families. I’m excited for Christmas and learned all about Santa Claus when I was in kindergarten. I wish that my friends also knew about my Monge culture, about the New Year, where we celebrate the end of harvest season and welcome in the New Year. My culture is beautiful. My grandma always makes sure that we have rice cakes during the New Year season, but she also makes sure that we celebrate our birthdays, too. I look forward to taking the Monge history, culture class when I go to high school. I especially look forward to having to have other peers understand more about my Monge culture so that I can just focus on school, sports, and music, and on having a good time without having to worry about being accepted for who I am. I hope for all students in Wisconsin to have the same opportunity I have here. Passing the resolution tonight is a step towards that hope. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.[897.43][897.43][applause] Next is Karen Pikert.
I’m Karen Pikert. I live at 1305 Ponderosa Drive. And I wrote you guys a letter, and I decided I would rather meet you and see you face-to-face. So if it sounds a little formal, that’s because I wrote it first, sorry. I have a 19-year-old son who’s in transition programming for special education at Memorial High School, and I’m a founding member of the Eau Claire Special Education PTA. During a recent board meeting, there was a budget presentation and discussion of the budget deficit. In that meeting, there were several comments made about the increased costs of special education, but no comments on increased costs in any other areas. There was no comment about ELL, or busing, or athletics, or new curriculum, or technology costs, or staff salary increases, or anything else, only about special education costs going up. I’d like to invite you to remember that when you single out special education students and the fact that they’re costing more money, you are talking about legally mandated services that they are entitled to under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. These students are entitled to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, and families are not asking for more than that. Singling these students out in a budget conversation but no other program costs anywhere in the district is both discouraging to me and revealing. By way of contrast, I’d like to draw your attention to the conversation later in that meeting and the ones that you’ve been having about the need for more school-based 4K programming. This seems to be viewed as an opportunity that the district is willing to pay millions of dollars to deliver. However, you are not required by law to offer these programs in-house. Just because parent preferences are leaning towards more expensive school-based programming, there is no mandate that we do this, rather than continue the way it’s going with a lot of the community-based programs. And yet, the only discussions being brought to the public are about how to expand the school-based programming, either by displacing an entire school or building a new facility, not whether we can afford to do so in the first place. To parents like me, it looks like you’re actually seeking out ways to serve new students in more expensive ways based on parent preferences that you are not required to meet. At the same time, you are pointing out how expensive it is to educate children like mine that you are legally required to already. As if educating some children represents an opportunity and others are expense items. Even after passing a 15-year referendum, we cannot meet our budget without dipping into our fund balance. I can’t believe I’m the only parent and citizen who thinks it might be best to first address the structural deficit we are facing and focusing on meeting the needs of the students that are legally already required to be in our buildings. And if you are unwilling to consider that option, will you at least try not to imply that over 1,000 students like my son are the reason our district is in the red? Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And that brings us to our final speaker, which is Ben Holman.
Ben Holman, 1727 West Mead Street. Hello, Board and Admin. Good to see you again. I’d like to talk about the upcoming listening sessions that you’ll be holding and what you’ll be voting on tonight. Based on what we’ve heard so far, it seems that the main agenda items will be the Option 1 that the Demo Trends Committee has proposed, contrasted with the very expensive Option 2 that they proposed. The Option 2, of course, is building a completely new Roosevelt, building a new 4K, and addressing southside needs with an expansion or with a new building. I think it’s disingenuous, and I think Option 2 should be removed from that discussion. I’ve attended the last two Demo Trends meetings, and it’s clear that Demo Trends is not sincerely considering that expensive second option. They’re discussing a third option that hasn’t been proposed to this board, but it’s quite reasonable, and they’re calling it relief, and that is keeping Roosevelt open as a two-section elementary and adjusting boundary lines to smooth our enrollment. They’ve prepared maps and have tentative plans. For some reason, it’s not coming to this board and being published. I’m not sure why. I don’t understand the politics, why it’s not being brought forward, but I think it makes a lot more sense to consider that alternative than the expensive second option. You’re the elected officials. You’re responsible to lead with the best information. You’re responsible to present feasible proposals to the public, not expensive, inconceivable options. So I ask you to adjust your plans for the listening sessions. Don’t discuss the second option, which has no chances of succeeding, but discuss the more modest and practical option that Demo Trends is considering. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us then to the Superintendent’s Report. Dr. Harabat.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I’d like to first review the upcoming school board events, and I’m going to go to the next board meeting. So on November 26th at 6:00 PM, there will be an Equity Review Committee for the all-night graduation parties. On November 27th at 1:00 PM, there will be a Budget Development Committee meeting. On November 29th at 4:00 PM, there’ll be a Revenue Committee meeting. On November 29th at 7:00 PM, a Gifted Advisory Council meeting. And on December 3rd at 8:45 AM, a Policy and Governance Committee meeting, followed that evening by the regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM. And all of these meetings will take place at the Administration Building. So it’s Thanksgiving time, and as a result, we have a number of students who are in New York to participate in the Macy’s Thanksgiving Day Parade. Carter Jenke and Jasmine Rosario are from North, and they are in New York, and they are joined by students from Memorial, Lucas Peterson, John Strechter, Jordan Polly, and Sophia Konzen, I think is the way you pronounce her name. And they are in New York City this week to prepare for the Macy’s Thanksgiving Day Parade, along with the band teacher Eric Dasher. Our Memorial senior, John, was chosen from hundreds of students who auditioned to play with a small group of students on the Today Show this morning. So if you didn’t see it, you can probably find it online. So congratulations to these fine musicians. We will watch them during the parade or watch for them during the parade. And to everyone, we wish you a happy Thanksgiving and a restful holiday. I’ll have one more piece of information after the HR report.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Harabat. For my report this evening, I first want to, on behalf of the school district, extend our congratulations to our newly-elected representatives, Governor-elect Evers, Lieutenant-Governor-elect Barnes, Senators-elect Smith and Bernier, as well as Representatives-elect Emerson and James. And I want to give a very special shout-out to Memorial alum Sarah Godlousky, who is now our soon-to-be Wisconsin State Treasurer. So we look forward to working with all of these individuals to advance the interests of public schools and the children and families that we all serve. I also want to congratulate longtime ECASD educator Amy Traynor, who’s been chosen by the Governor-elect to serve as one of the co-chairs of his transition team. This is an incredible honor, and she deserves recognition for that. And finally, I want to recognize Transgender Day of Remembrance, which will be observed tomorrow, as a day to memorialize those who have been murdered and committed suicide as a result of transphobia. You can learn more about that day by visiting glaad.org/tdor. And finally, just as a response to one concern that was raised in public comment regarding the budget discussion, if folks are interested in viewing the board’s conversation or reading minutes regarding the discussion of expenses or additional costs, we have that, and that’s from our October 22nd minutes. And we would, of course, welcome any opportunity to talk more about that. So that’s it for my President’s Report, and that takes us to the Student Representatives Report. Who’s going first tonight?
Just a quick update on some things that are moving along with the students at North High School. We are working with a physical education teacher and our principal, Mr. Bushman, to try and get a self-defense class available for free for the seniors who are going to be graduating for this year. Hopefully, trying to integrate that into our physical education curriculum moving forward, hopefully in some other schools, too. So there’s just a quick update.
Thank you.
This past week at Memorial, we enjoyed a Veterans Day presentation, and as far as school events, right now, there is also a Toys for Tots drive.
Thank you. All right. And then that takes us to School Board Committee reports. Is there an update from the Budget Development Committee? No? Okay. Policy and Governance?
Yes. This morning, we met to discuss draft presented by the LEAP Committee, and we engaged in a very interesting conversation and raised multiple questions, which led us to send back their draft to the committee for reconsideration. So I will have to ask you, Mr. President, to remove the item for discussion tonight.
And I do have an update I’ll share on behalf of the, actually first, is there an update from the LEAP Committee?
Yes. Although Commissioner Torres stole a little bit of my thunder. We did finish our policy work, and we had sent it on to Policy Governance, but now I guess we can anticipate getting it back and continuing our work.
Perfect. Thank you. I’ll share on behalf of the Revenue Committee. We had our first meeting on November 14th from 5:00 till 6:30. It included talking through the charge of the committee, talking about the committee process and timeline. It included a discussion, pretty holistically, about the school district’s budgetary needs and the deficit and the decisions that we had to make this year. And then it really got into what was the exciting part, which was the members of that committee started sharing their ideas for ways that we can streamline district services, pursue new programming, things that would bring additional dollars to the school district or modernize the way that our system operates. And it’s a great group. The majority of the committee members represent the private sector. They’re all parents as well, with the exception of one retiree. So it was a really good conversation. And we even have a committee member who is affiliated with, I believe it was Hardee’s, who offered to bring Hardee’s for the entire committee at the next meeting, but I’m sad to say applications are closed. But it’s a great group, and I’m looking forward to the future of that. So that’s it for our committee reports. Do we have a legislative update for this evening? Okay. And then that takes us to our consent agenda. So we will consider all of these, 7.2 through 7.15. And if you have one, as I read it, that you’d like to pull, please indicate that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2018, the minutes of closed session, November 13th, 2018, the minutes of the special meeting of November 13th, 2018, the financial report of October 2018, gifts in the amount of $19,517.56 for the period of October 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2018, payment of all bills in the amount of $6,522,066.8, and net payroll in the amount of $3,631,816.16 for the period of October 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report, revisions to Policy 831, Tobacco and Vaping Free Zones on School Property and Events, revisions to Policy 811.1, Family Engagement, revisions to Policy 447.1, Staff Use of Physical Force, Restraint and Seclusion, revisions to Policy 821.2, News Releases, revisions to Policy 674, Online Solicitations, Crowdfunding, Crowdsourcing, the First Cash Advance on ECASD Line of Credit, and the Student Transit Contract. So I would entertain a motion to approve 7.2 through 7.15. Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Then we’ll do a roll call vote on this one. Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know that we had representatives from student transit here at the meeting, so I want to thank you for coming, and we look forward to continuing our work with you. And that brings me, before we go to individually considered resolutions, I know that Dr. Har- And that brings me, before we go to individually considered resolutions, I know that Dr. Hardaback wanted to say something regarding the human resources report.
With the approval of the human resources report tonight, you approved the retirement of Sue Brown. And Sue is with us tonight, and I'd like for her to stand. Sue, you have to keep standing just for a minute or two, so I can talk about you. Sue joined us in 1999 as a kitchen manager, and she brought with her a wealth of experience as a nutritionist, a dietitian, food service supervisor, from both public education and other public programs such as WIC, which is the Women and Children Program. In July 2007, she became the Director of Food and Nutrition for the district. She's been a member of both the American Dietetic Association and the Chippewa Valley Dietetic Association. She's worked tirelessly for nearly 20 years to ensure healthy foods are served to our students and our staff. She's seen numerous changes, numerous changes, in the school lunch program and in the school lunch regulations, and she's seen a dramatic increase in our need for free and reduced price meals served in the district. Sue has worked diligently to implement regulatory changes in the school district, and she's worked very hard to make sure that all children were served equally. She has a passion for food safety, which I think anyone who knows her and works with her will know, not just in the work she does with school lunches, but even within this building, keeping an eye on staff gatherings and potlucks so that unsafe food is not consumed. I know that you have a lot of travel plans in front of you, and we just wish you the very best. You are going to be deeply missed. So, but congratulations, and thank you for your service to the school district. When I said, "Sue, could she be at this meeting?", she said, "Yes, as long as she didn't have to say anything."
Thank you for that, Dr. Hardaback. That takes us now to our individually considered resolutions. The first is revisions to policy 185, Board and District Committees. So we first discussed this at a work session on September 24th. We had a first reading on November 5th. There were two suggested amendments to the draft policy, and there were really two conversation areas. So I'll briefly go through each area where there were amendments made to the amendments, and then we can discuss each if you'd like, and then hopefully have some sort of a motion and second and vote. The first change is just looking for more flexibility under the term limits. So currently, we had the amendment was going to say two consecutive three-year terms, but we discussed, you know, there could be the potential of wanting to retain a committee member for longer than two, three-year terms. And we certainly, as school board members, are not limited to two, three-year terms, so we thought to hold them to the same standard, that it's a three-year term upon approval and/or reapproval. Are there any questions regarding that section? Okay. Then the only other section was regarding the advisory committee's ex officio membership. So the conversation was really about the role of an ex officio member, voting versus non-voting, a question of what the current district practices, as well as what the regulations or guidelines currently were. So we did do some fact-finding in conversation with the McKinley Charter School -- I'm sorry, not McKinley, it was the Montessori Charter School, that does have it in their governance board, that there is an ex officio representative that is non-voting. So we currently have that on the books. And then we did discuss with, perhaps Secretary Iverson, you could explain what they had said with the Public Schools Foundation?
Sure. The Public Schools Foundation does have in their bylaws that the superintendent and the board member are ex officio members of that committee. They had a change to that. They used to have voting rights, and then that changed in their bylaws in 2016, so they are not voting members now.
Okay. So that was the information that we got. So based on that, the change here is to keep the title "ex officio" because we currently utilize it in every other respect, with the exception of the non-voting clarification. So it's in an ex officio capacity as a non-voting representative. The only other change is talking that it provides what we do in some policies on a limited basis, but provides a bit of rationale as to why that's the district process. So it says that "board members shall not serve as a voting member of the committee to avoid any appearance of speaking or acting on behalf of the board." So that's the recommendation from the Policy and Governance Committee, based on the current bylaw language of those other boards. I think that if the bylaws were different in those other boards, we could maybe have a different conversation, but that's based on that. So were there any other questions in that area? Or, okay, it was a good conversation to have, and we can monitor that. So seeing no one's light on, I would entertain a motion then to approve 185 as amended.
So moved. Second?
Okay. And then we can do just a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? No? All right. That motion carries.
I can't have a question now.
You can.
I just wanted to clarify then, as far as working on the transition of committees, then we're going to work on putting that in the --
In the handbook.
In the handbook.
Right.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That takes us then to item 8.2, which is the resolution supporting the Hmong education bill. And we had some great public comment regarding that. And it has been in board docs. It was put in on, I believe, Thursday, so hopefully you've had the chance to read this. Are there any questions or comments before we would move to vote on this? And then I would read it in full, so it's in the record? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? No? Okay. So I will go ahead and I'll read this into the record then for our listeners on the radio and on TV. "The resolution supporting the Hmong education bill. Whereas the vision of the Eau Claire area school district, ECASD, is to challenge minds, build relationships, and nurture individual growth to prepare all students for post-secondary success, and one of the strategic planning goals of the school board is to articulate and align a culturally relevant, rigorous, and engaging curriculum and assessment system for pre-K through 12. And whereas the Hmong community and many members of the community at large are concerned about the lack of instruction their children are receiving about Hmong history, culture, and Hmong people's role in the Vietnam War, and Hmong history and culture play an integral role in the Chippewa Valley. And whereas Hmong people constitute the largest Asian population in the state of Wisconsin, and Asian students make up for 9.6% of the students in the ECASD. And whereas Wisconsin is home to the third-largest population of Hmong people in the nation, with the population of Hmong people growing by at least 46% since 2000, and Eau Claire has one of the largest concentrations of the Hmong population in the state. And whereas the ECASD offers course #1246, Hmong history and culture, as a class at the high school level, starting in the 2018-19 school year. And the ECASD partners with the Eau Claire area Hmong Mutual Assistance Association to teach Hmong language classes for middle-school students. And whereas there is no current state-standardized curriculum to teach Hmong history, culture, language, and the Hmong people's role in the Vietnam War. Therefore, be it resolved that the Eau Claire school board supports the passage of the Hmong education bill to create state standards for instruction regarding the role of the Hmong people in fighting for the United States in the Vietnam War, the persecution of the Hmong people by the Laotian government after the Vietnam War, and the reasons for the immigration of many Hmong people to the United States, as well as Hmong culture and worldviews. Be it further resolved that the school board shall send a copy of this resolution to the Governor of Wisconsin and members of the Wisconsin Legislature in the second week of January 2019. And witness whereof, the school board of the Eau Claire area school district has executed this resolution this 19th day of November 2018." So we're hopeful of the prospects of getting this passed at the state level, and hopefully we'll see many other school districts follow suit in calling for this change. And I will give this to Pa Tao, who's been helping to lead this effort at the state level, and she can Xerox it, and we will also take care of sending it on our behalf to the legislature as well. Thank you. That takes us now to item 8.3, which is format for listening sessions to obtain feedback on the demographic trends and facility planning committee recommendations. Ms. Kohler.
I'm before you again tonight to provide a draft structure for the upcoming listening sessions for the 4K and elementary facility needs. As I've shared with you in the past, the district strategic plan is important to the committee, and our work is aligned to that plan in the three areas highlighted on the slide, academic achievement, social emotional -- student social and emotional growth, and partnerships with families and the community. Understanding the importance of sharing information and answering the questions of stakeholders, we discussed a plan for listening sessions in more detail at the last board meeting. Based on that discussion, it was determined that the listening sessions would provide information about both potential solutions shared with the board. Option 1 is the recommendation, the current recommendation from the Demographics and Trends Committee. Option 2 is the previous recommendation that the committee shared with the board a few years ago, and then in May recommended that it be rescinded, but there hasn't been a rescission since then, so that is part of the reason that recommendation 2 is still on the table, or option number 2 is still on the table. We also discussed including information about how elementary boundaries would be impacted within each of those options, presented scenarios or present scenarios for families detailing what would happen if current middle-school geographic boundaries were maintained, or if current middle-school feeder patterns were maintained with any changes. Share cost projections regarding facility needs for each options. Those projections, we decided, would be developed by the Director of Buildings and Grounds, Larry Sommerfeld, who's a trained architect with LEED certification. Based on the feedback from the board on November 5th, from the demographic committee on November 6th, and from the Family Advisory Council on November 6th, we've drafted the following proposal for listening sessions. We propose holding four listening sessions throughout the district focused on 4K and elementary enrollment and facility needs. These could be held at North Star, South, and DeLong. We've received a suggestion that a special session be held at Roosevelt, or we could hold a larger fourth session at Memorial High School. With Thanksgiving and the winter holidays just around the corner, we know that families will be busy and unable to attend. And we also want to make sure that we have accurate and up-to-date information regarding potential boundary changes, middle-school boundaries, and some of the questions that have been posed by community members. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow at 1:30 with the City of Eau Claire to talk through some of the building plans throughout the city, and we'll have more accurate information or more up-to-date information once that meeting is held. In order to accommodate the family needs and really to prepare the information that we need, we propose holding the listening sessions in February and March of 2019. Following those sessions, the committee would like to come before the board once again to share the community feedback from those listening sessions. We propose that this occur in April of 2019. This timeline would also provide the board time to vote on the recommendations by the end of the 2018-19 school year, as we discussed earlier this fall. At the last board meeting, the board emphasized the need for listening sessions to provide the community the opportunity to share ideas and to ask questions. We believe that the times outlined here would provide time not only for information to be shared with the community, but also emphasize the interactive exchange that you requested. We would, of course, take notes at each session, share those notes with the board, and we would record the sessions for folks that couldn't attend but might want to watch it in the comfort of their home. Members of the Family Advisory Council stressed the importance of sharing the district-wide perspective at listening sessions and being clear about how each option would impact families throughout the district. We developed the topics that you see on the slide here based on the input from the Family Advisory Council. During the 20 minutes focused on the overview, we proposed sharing the four following items. A roadmap of the recommendation. The roadmap would share the history of the committee's work, the current recommendation, listening sessions, and next steps. A district-wide look at enrollment data and trends as compared to the current facilities' facility capacity would be shared. We've received recommendations from the Family Advisory Council, as well as the board, and through some discussion at DEMO and Trends about really looking at if we start to worry at 90% capacity, if that's kind of when our radar goes up, is, hmm, this is a school that we might want to, you know, be thinking about, what does that number look like compared to 100% capacity? So that's information we're planning to prepare and share. The options presented by the committee would be shared, including options 1 and 2 that I discussed earlier. As you've heard earlier tonight, it's also been suggested that we share information about a third option, completing the deferred maintenance projects at Roosevelt to allow it to continue to operate as a two-section school. This option would still include boundary changes to provide relief for the Roosevelt attendance area, as well as facility needs for 4K and elementary schools nearing capacity. And we would like to share the impact that each option would have on families, including potential boundary changes and middle-school attendance options. The board, the Family Advisory Council, and the DEMO and Trends Committee each suggested an in-depth focus at each session as well. We propose taking time at each session to provide an in-depth examination of one topic in particular. Families had several questions about the topics that you see listed here, and based on that, we propose in-depth discussions around the proposed new boundaries, expansion of elementary schools, middle-school boundaries, and supporting schools and families through transition. As I shared earlier, we're committed to sharing the most accurate information that we have with families and community members, and gathering that information for some of these in-depth topics will take time. If the board votes to move forward with this model, we believe we could have this information ready by February. So with that, I'd like to provide the opportunity for the board to ask questions and provide further direction.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. Would you be able to go back to that slide that showed option 3? Thank you. Commissioner Vu, did you have a question?
Option, this slide?
No, the one that had option 3 included?
Topics.
About topics? That one? Yeah. But did you have a question?
I do.
Okay. You go ahead first. I'll go last.
It may be that it's in the plan, but I'd like to have the district to be more inclusive in its way of inviting families. Typically, we heard speaker who either are very involved through personal connections or network or level of understanding about the issue, but there may be family that may not have heard about this issue at all. So how we can engage audience at all level, it's very important. I don't know the detail, but I believe the district will have to be thinking deeper in that invitations.
All right. Thank you.
Two things just to add to the mix. I'm not sure if they were discussed through the FAC, but one is, and I brought them up before, but just to keep them at the forefront, is talking about accommodations made at the sessions if we're going to be providing childcare, which I think will be very important that we do. And then the other is, I know there's been a real effort on the part of district staff to engage our Hmong families, as well as our Spanish-speaking families, and I'm wondering if there would be value in having -- if there would be value in having a session, would it be six or seven or whatever, that would, one that would be in Hmong and one that would be in Spanish. I think that as we talk about particularly the north side, that is where, in terms of a lot of our demographics, we're serving a lot of families who are Hmong or Latinx, and so making sure that we're reaching those families, I, yeah.
So can I just clarify then?
Yep.
Here where it says North Star, South, DeLong, Memorial, or Roosevelt, to add a couple of locations?
I think it would be, I think it would be really worthwhile, and we could work with the BEAs on it, but I just think making that, taking that effort, that extra step, I think, would be good to include them in the process, because of, you know, as we talk about equity with these decisions, making sure we're not disproportionately impacting communities of color and making sure they're a part of the solution.
I think that was what you were alluding to as well, Commissioner Vu, right?
So does that, does that kind of get at what you're, okay. So, yeah, if we could add those. Is the board okay with looking at doing that? Would that be, okay. Oh, Commissioner Vika, I can't see her light, but I'm assuming you're.
So I had wondered if anyone expressed an interest in really having, if you look at the slide that has the four concentrated topics, and so the one at Memorial or Roosevelt, I wonder if anyone expressed an interest in having a Rose, kind of a, not that it would be Roosevelt only, but Roosevelt-focused, so that topic would take place at Memorial, and then just something crafted for the Roosevelt families specifically?
I, our board members, how do board members feel about that? Commissioner Torres?
I was actually going to say about the same. I would highly suggest that we reserve one of the listening sessions to be hosted by Roosevelt. And then my other highlight would be when we address the impact of options, potential boundary changes, let's not, in the topics for overview slide, that one. That we don't forget that we need to keep equity duly balanced.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Vika's idea as well. Commissioner Hambukboyle, and then student representative Green?
Yeah, that session with Roosevelt nestled with Roosevelt did come up at the Family Advisory Council, too. I had a question about the option that I submitted with Demo and Trends relative to a pre-K 1-2, leaving the younger Roosevelt kids there, or what that might look like. Did that just not get as far as even a discussion with them? Because I came up at the Parent Advisory Council, too.
Right, so just so everybody knows what you're referring to, do you want to provide an overview, or would you like me to? Why don't you go?
I could do that. I don't know, as I listened to the, when this was all presented and we were giving other options, and I started thinking about what would it look like if it was a pre-K, K-1-2 building, where the neighborhood families could keep their littles at Roosevelt and move them later? And what would that look like for us to be able to have a setting where we could cross-level early childhood, which is really interpreted as birth to grade three, and what that might look like? And they do have those kinds of setups in the state and across the country, allowing a really rich early childhood environment. And so I had submitted that option as well, but I knew that I didn't have all the information relative to Demo and Trends, so I'm just wondering if it was discussed, why it was not discussed as an option.
So the Demo and Trends Committee anticipates that as the listening sessions move on, we had talked earlier, President Luganville had said, "We hope that the sessions bring forth more ideas," and that would be one of the ideas. The other thing is, it will require, we don't have the boundaries necessarily finalized for that. I think, facility-wise, it would be very similar to a potential option three, which would be.
And that's fine, Kim, doesn't it? So it could be a potential option three, four, five, whatever. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Okay.
So the answer heard there is we're going to make sure that the sessions are facilitated in a way that opens it up moving forward at the end of the session, that people can submit ideas that are like that or others?
I anticipate when I come after the listening sessions that there will be many options suggested.
Yep. Can we see again the, can you do the schedule? I think it's one of the earlier ones.
Oh, boy.
Maybe, yeah, right there, that one, the one before, just.
This one?
No, the, yes.
There we go.
This shows the, sort of the ratios, right? And there's a good, healthy amount of time dedicated to questions and ideas? Am I interpreting that right?
Yes.
Okay, and I think, oh, yes.
And just also on bringing more languages, are you providing an American Sign Language interpreter at these listening sessions to accommodate those families as well? Thank you.
Good suggestion. So, and I just want to, I want to circle back, because I know one of the comments in the public forum was regarding that third option that the parents asked for, and it does sound like that's going to be included.
It can be included. We, yep.
Are you seeking guidance from us tonight on that?
I am.
Okay.
So the Reader's Digest version from Demo and Trends, two years ago, recommended a facility upgrade or replacement of Roosevelt in the spring, said, "Looking at the bigger picture, we're not sure that that serves the entire district. We explored a couple of options. One was relief to Roosevelt, redrawing boundaries, keeping it two-section school, and the other was that repurposing option one. When weighing those two options, Demo and Trends voted to go with the repurposing option from a district-wide glance." But we do have the information and the data for a potential option three, which is, we named relief.
Okay. And that would be, and option three would be, would you would present something in the vein of maintaining the existing school?
As a two-section building.
As a two-section building, okay.
It does involve, even as a two-section building, redrawing boundaries, so there will be some attendance area changes in many neighborhoods still, in order to fit within our guidelines of where we want the capacity for each building to be.
I think it's a, I'll just speak personally, I think it makes sense to include it as an option, because I think that there is a contingency of folks who would like the status quo, or would like it to be as close to what it is now, and just provide that relief. So I think that it would be important to include it so that we can have the fullness of a conversation about it, and about, is that a good option? Are there better alternatives? But I think it's, I think it makes sense to include it as a third option. I don't know if other board members have an opinion on that?
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Vu?
I'm thinking that there must be a reason why the committee has not included formally. Therefore, between now and the listening session, if more information comes forward with more defined possible answer to the audience questioning about option number three, or more information to be presented, like one, option one and two, then go ahead with the idea to present it. I'm just a little bit cautious that the committee may not be ready to present, but I think between now and then, we can ask that they are ready.
And as February would be the date, right? So we'd have, would you?
Depending on the time in February that they start, we'd have two to three meetings with Demo and Trends, but we could also have a work session or add a meeting to make sure that we were prepared.
Okay. So could you go back to that slide then about each area that will be included? Not that one, that one. Okay. So are there any further comments or questions regarding those areas? So would include option three, so, and then we would look to, so that's the only revision I see for this part, but then in the other section, I think the board consensus, at least from what I'm hearing, would be that we would revise it to add addition, that there would be Roosevelt-specific, and then the other changes would be that we would have a specific session at an identified school that would be in Hmong, a specific session in Spanish, and that we would make sure that there's the, this probably doesn't have to be included in the thing itself, but that making sure that in the planning of it, that there are, there's a sign language interpreter, and that we have childcare available on site. Okay. Is that covering what we've discussed? Okay. So I would entertain a motion then from the board to approve that plan as modified through this discussion right now.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
If you go back to the, there you go, impact of options or the expiration of options, option one, option two, we're going to do option three and potential other options? Then there's a placeholder for that conversation. Can we do that? Okay, is that okay?
Well, yeah, I think that reflects what we, we want to make sure that the way it's structured allows for people to.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else have comments or questions? Okay. So then I would entertain a motion from somebody to approve the listening session plan as revised.
Sumo.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. And then we can do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that's everybody, that motion carries. And now we adjourn to committee, and the two committee reports, thank you, Ms., thank you. And the, and Ms. Kohler, let us know how the city meeting goes.
Thank you.
That takes us then to 10.1, five-year capital selected projects. And I believe that's Mr. Sommerfeld.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Patty, if you'll pull up the first sheet. I come this evening with a presentation for our five-year capital plan that we do every year. In the 2019 budget, we have $500,000 for the two culinary projects. That is funding from the 2019 and '20 budget. We will be supplementing that with $200,000 from the current year budget to do that project. For those that were not on the board last year, the culinary project, it went out for bid late in the spring, and due to lateness of the year and all the construction activity that was going on, we did not get any plumbing bids, so we were not able to proceed with that project last year. So the project is ready, and we'll be putting it out for bid in January to bid that project to get the contractors before they have, you know, their summer activity all filled up. So we'll be doing that. What I've also shown is a column for 2020 that shows the current priority listing for capital projects that were deferred, and those that did not fit in the 2020, I have in the beyond. There's a second page, if we go to that, that is a look ahead, just projecting what projects we might see in 2021, '22, and '22, '23. Again, with buildings and grounds, our, we're very fluid with our projects, because all it takes is for a chiller or air handler to start exhibiting problems, and all of a sudden, we're reprioritizing all of our lists. So I did want to show you, you know, just to look down the road of the projects that we're looking at as well. And every year, we look at, reprioritize the projects, and bring them back before the board with our recommended five-year for the upcoming year. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Yeah, any questions? Thank you. That was good and short.
I tried.
You want to get out of here by 8:15, don't you? I just have one, and that is, I'm just wondering if, don't need an answer tonight, just a thought, if we're going to, if we're going, looking at 2020 beyond, maybe 2022, 2021, but I know that there's looking at the Family Services Conference Room in the board office, and I think that's great, because obviously, we need to make sure we have great facilities for that. I'm wondering about that restroom over around the corner, it kind of looks like it's out of a horror movie, and I'm just wondering if it could maybe be fixed up a little bit? And one of the thoughts I had with it is, we really want to make sure we have accessible gender-neutral restrooms, single-stall restrooms across the district, and we don't have one in this board office that's easy to access from the main hallway. So wondering if that could maybe be something that we'd slip in there, maybe that same year, but just someone's wondering about that.
We are working on that. The tile, we've discovered, is loose from the substrate, so we can't patch it. We've actually have tile on hand. We'll be starting with the floor tile in the next couple of months, so we're trying to phase it and work it in out of my operating budget where it allows, so we are planning ahead and working towards that.
That's great, thank you. And I know it's kind of in the weeds for a board member to ask about that, but since we're spending time in these, this building more than any other building, I think about that one. So, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Harder, and then Commissioner Hambukboyle.
Just from a budget development standpoint, Larry, I know you presented to the committee a few days ago, and a point we made in that discussion was that there was an emphasis here on getting closure on a lot of the referendum work, sort of for the, was the 2020-21 timeframe was kind of the target? Am I right about that?
The referendum projects that are identified, we hope to complete all the remaining projects this coming summer of 2019.
Okay, right, yeah.
And that's, that's an important point, I think, to have that closed up, and I just wanted to point that out, that aspect of the plan. I think it's, it's an important aspect of the plan, that we maintain the integrity of that, because having that closure and that timeframe is going to be helpful for us as we move forward.
Thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Harder, Commissioner Hambukboyle.
So Larry, this, as we have this, I want to put it in the big picture. We are still not able to spend the industry standard per square foot, still, correct?
That's correct. You normally would spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $0.02 per square foot with 2.4 million square feet. We should be somewhere $4 to $4.5 million a year to keep our facilities.
Thank you. I just want to make sure people understand within the budget that we're still dealing with that, even though we passed a referendum to bring up what we could, we, with funding, we still are not at an industry standard. So I just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Thank you for helping make that point.
Thank you. Commissioner Vu?
I know what I'm about to say is small, but it's important. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Luganville about the bathroom for our staff. It's important that we look at the best interests of people, and that goes along with the same line about this room. I remember about four years ago, I came to this room to listen to the board meeting, hoping to gain some insight about whether I should join the board or not, and one thing that occurred in my mind was to improve the mic system for the audience. I couldn't hear well back then, and I don't think we have changed much. So it's important for the audience, particularly our administrator, to have comfort seating arrangement, plus audio and visual that will allow them to fully engage and be able to participate well. I don't, like I said, it's small. I don't, like I said, it's small, but it's important.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Commissioner Vu.
If I could clarify, I said $0.02 a square foot. It should have been $2.00 a square foot earlier.
Okay. A little different.
Decimal point got off.
Thank you for that clarification. Have we looked at the AV in this room in recent years? Do we know? Yes. Yeah, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, James Martin's team has reviewed in the past, and we, for budgetary reasons, did not choose to upgrade it beyond what it is. It does work, and we are able to keep a couple together, but we didn't, did not make any additional changes as a budget-saving measure.
Okay. Or maybe that's something we can, how much was it? Do we remember? That's okay. That's fine. But maybe there could be follow-up to what Commissioner Vu was asking about, making sure that this room is as accommodating as possible for folks, so. All right. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this? And just logistically, are you looking to have us approve this plan at the next meeting? Or yes? Okay. So if any board members have questions or comments, just send those to Mr. Sommerfeld or Dr. Hartabek between now and then. All right. No other comments? And this is a committee report, so anyone in the public who would wish to speak? Okay. Seeing done, then we'll move on. 10.2, which is the discussion and possible first reading of the policy, 332 LEAP Committee, we met regarding it this morning in Policy and Governance and had some additional questions and areas that we would like for the LEAP Committee to consider in adding. So I would, because it's on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to refer this policy back to the LEAP Committee.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. That was everyone, and that brings us then to our request for future agenda items. Yes, Commissioner Hambuch Boil.
It isn't really an agenda item, but I, I have Ken Calderi's book, The Split Screen Strategy. I would love if any board members would want to do a book study or a, or a conversation around this. I would help facilitate or put that together. So if I hear somebody from somebody, fine, and if I don't, that's fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any requests for future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at (715) 839-5067 or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.